Congress meeting in order, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is a proclamation. Gentlemen, join with the podium. Whereas the town of Silver City is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting the town of Silver City, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires killed more than 2,300 people in the United States in 2012 according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to more than 365,000 home fires, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and three out of five home fire deaths result from fires in properties without working smoke alarms, and whereas in one-fifth of all homes with smoke alarms, none were working, and when smoke alarms should have operated but did not do so, it was usually because batteries were missing, disconnected, or dead. And whereas the town of Silver City's residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of the home, and they should install smoke alarms and alert devices that meet the needs of people who are deaf or hard of hearing, and whereas the town of Silver City's residents who have planned and practiced home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas the Silver City Fire Department is dedicated to reducing the occurrences of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas the town of Silver City residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes, and whereas the 2014 Fire Prevention Week theme, Working Smoke Alarms Save Lives, test drawers every month, effectively serves to remind us that we need working smoke alarms to give us the time to get out safely. Now therefore, I'm Michael S. Martinez, Mayor of the town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, and in view of the inherent value of this, do hereby proclaim October 5th through the 11th, 2014, as Fire Prevention Week. Gentlemen, if you want to say anything, or? I don't think so. Thank you, guys. We appreciate your time. We have five minutes to speak, and we only have one person signed in, Dr. Martinez, in regards to working folks.
Good evening to the members of the council, all of you, staff, other folks who are here this evening. Art Martinez, retired university professor, and a longtime community activist. I'm here representing this evening the Committee to Promote Democracy. And when we discovered, our organization discovered, and we think it was something that should have been known a lot earlier, but we discovered that there is yet another attempt underway to decertify our local steelworkers' labor union, we decided to publicly express, openly, publicly express our deep regret about this negative development, and also to say that we strongly believe that a majority of our working brothers and sisters at the Chino Mining operation will prevail, will prevail, and keep their union open and strong, and that they will maintain and enable keep their families safe, sound, and secure. That's what makes most of us in this county and in this city and in all municipalities, that's what we are all about, and we know that very well, don't we? And we'll keep working at whatever is necessary. We also have a question we're just briefly going to present. We decided to ask how and why it is that any county and its municipalities, such as ours, for working-class folks and gente, and their allies have been traditionally willing and successful in establishing a local, a national, an international iconic, iconic reputation, from local A-90 and forward to the steelworkers now, not only establishing labor unions in the county and successfully struggling for and eventually winning impressive workers' rights for as many as possible, such as decent wages, decent benefits, healthy and safe working place conditions for our laboring force, for example, within the city, we now find it almost impossible in many venues in our state to support and bring about a fair and decent minimum wage increase for all of our working and our laboring friends and neighbors and sus familias, and their families. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Next item on the agenda is Council Comments. Council Edison?
Yes, sir. So first up, I'd like to ask Mr. Brown about Swan Street. I've had several complaints about the extended closure, and now apparently the southern, southbound going south on Swan Street is closed as well, so I know that he has some information for us on that.
Well, due for yesterday, the boring was actually complete, well, yes, it was completed. It did get through, but when they, when they did get through to the other side, they found some conduit wrapped around it, and also that evening, I can't remember exactly who it was, but it was reported to us that four or five streetlights were out on that side of the street, so we went down there, PNM actually was the one that informed us, and we found that the borer had taken out the conduit for the lights on that side of the street, and because basically the way it's set up is when the streetwork, the highway work was done from Swan Street through to Roseville Road, up to, up that way, when they replaced the lights, the state actually turns over the maintenance and, maintenance and repair of the lighting and everything within it to the town of Silver City. This is actually the first time that they've ever, that I've been employed with a town that we've actually had somebody, it's required by the state to bore under the state highways, and when they do a boring, they request line locates, which protects the contractor, which the contractor is protected because we did go out, PNM did go out, the other utilities did go out, and mark where the utilities were. The problem was, was that when the highway work was done, we didn't know that where the conduit was for the lights, and so, and of course, we don't, we've never had to do a line locate for an electrical conduit light, which we're not in the business of doing, we've never done, so we really didn't know we were supposed to do it, so we found that that, that was our initial thought, where it was just the lighting. Well, today, the employees were out there digging, trying to locate where the conduit was pulled at, and we found out that also there is conduit from the state, that the state actually owns and operates, which actually connects all the streetlights from Swan to PA, up to Roseville, all the way up there, because they can actually control the timing of the lights through that conduit. That was pulled as well, so the state's gonna have to repair that, and that's why we had to close Swan off all the way, was because it was pulled from that power box on the other side of the street, was pulled out from the power box, and, and so we had to close the road so we could figure out, first of all, how far it was pulled back, and find out that it wasn't just that conduit that we didn't know was there, but it was also the DOT's conduit that they knew was there, and they didn't do a line locate for it either. So we, we've already contracted, a local contractor to do the repairs on our stuff, and the employees will continue digging back to see how far back we have to go back to replace the conduit, and then have it, so they can move forward and repair our portion of it. I can't speak for the state, though.
So that could take some time simply because of the projected rains that we're now starting to get, and what's gonna happen tomorrow with the attention system?
It's been money and everything, and our employees were still out there digging, so, you know, we just kept going to try to get this thing moving because we know that it's been a real pain for the public, but it was something out of our control that happened.
So the southern part of Swan could be closed for a while until the state gets their stuff together to fix their portion of it?
I believe Peter told me that they would be here Monday to do theirs, but hopefully by that time, we would have already replaced all of the conduit and gotten everything ready, so it's just a matter of tying everything back together, and hopefully November next week. I hope.
Great, thank you. I also want to comment, I had a number of phone calls over the weekend and Friday evening from Silver City folks who live in my district and several other districts who were concerned about the notification for the Code Red of the escapees. They were concerned about the timing of this, that it was almost 24 hours later, actually it was 24 hours later when many of them in my district turned it on the news because they didn't receive, even though they'd signed up for Code Red, they didn't receive anything about the escapees. I was fortunate, I did receive it about a little bit out, I guess 6:45 or something like that, but that was because I also have my place of work listed so that I can be notified if there's something occurring over where I work at the university, so, but I did not get anything to my own home, so there's two concerns. One, timely notification about escapees from the Grant County Detention Center, and the other one is making sure that all Silver City folks that are on the Code Red system are notified, not just certain slight portions if there's an escapee or escapees. There's, as several folks pointed out, the Code Red, one of the hot topics about why to get it was so that there would be prompt notification about issues at the detention center if there are any escapees, so I will ask the mayor to discuss that, and I think he'll have something to say after this, because I think that we need to talk to the county about ensuring that our folks are notified, you know, that Silver City folks are notified no matter where they think these escapees may be. You know, I'm just gonna tell myself, I got that, and I immediately ran to my back door where my dogs were outside, and thought, oh my God, I need to lock this, and then I thought, wait a minute, they, they escaped like, you know, almost 24 hours ago. How silly is that? And then I got phone calls at, starting at 10 o'clock at night, and the first thing on the news station I was watching, and I guess other people were watching, said, we just got notification that there are two escapees from the Grant County Detention Center. So I got phone calls and comments the next few days from, you know, elderly folks that live in my districts, and the women, and people, and people with children and families that were concerned about not being notified, so I think we need to work with the county to ensure that they're notified promptly and everyone else.
Is there any more contact in the council's concerns?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Councilwoman Edison?
Thank you, Mayor. I just got three phone comments. One is that when I was running for office, there was a lot of concern about working on the roads. We're working on the roads, and so please be patient as we fulfill the citizens' desire to have the roads worked on. Sometimes roadwork means detours and delays more than we would like, but just recognize we're gonna have smooth surfaces ahead. I also want to remind everyone that the Chino Festival is coming up, the 10th Annual West Grotton Celebrate Our Wild River Flowing. And I used to live on the East Coast, so I know that these hurricane-bound rains can be really wild, and they can pour really hard, so be cautious, this is not a regular monsoon.
Thank you, Council, Council Ray?
Okay.
Okay. Along the same discussion on the reverse 9/11 or the Code Red notification, things that, you know, we have a significant contract with the county to jail the, those people that we bring in, and as such, we do need to take responsibility for ensuring that our contractor takes care of business and notifies our citizens appropriately, so definitely get with the county and let them know that we would strongly desire immediate notification, even upon the possibility of them notifying immediately and saying 30 minutes later, hey, it's a false alarm, that's, that's a preferred error than late notification, so we do want immediate notification. And also, as you, as you communicate with the county, I've heard from some constituents that the county is possibly letting inmates out, releasing them right out the door, so that they are released and end up having to walk into town, so they're walking through neighborhoods, through, in and around the Ridge Road area, and one specific constituent mentioned that a lady who was released late in the evening actually ended up spending the night in her backyard unbeknownst to the, to the resident, so, so there is, there is an issue there, so if we could work on a plan to have the county, when they release people who don't have rights, bring them to some location in town, or, you know, some strategy that doesn't just have them released on Ridge Road and walking that neighborhood where there's a lot of kids at play, a lot of residents, a lot of elderly residents, I think that would be beneficial. Does anybody need ground to?
Yes, sir.
Next item on the agenda, in the area, is there any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Council Edison?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the regular town council meeting September 9th, 2014, as presented. A second?
We had a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the regular meeting September 9th, 2014, as presented. Is there any further discussion? No, sir.
Yes, sir.
The motion is second, as already stated. All those in favor? Are you opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is staff reports. Mr. Brown?
The only report I had was gonna be on Swan Street, so, you know, be patient with us. It wasn't something that we caused, and I'm not passing any, putting any blame on anything. It's, you know, it's just like the chip ceiling, you know, everybody wanted it, but when it happened, everybody complained about it, so, you know, just be, please be patient, and, and we're working with the contractors and the state and everybody as fast as we can, and we can't control the weather, so just please be patient.
We'll take the good with the bad, and the man who knows that was good. From the fire department?
Good evening. I'm Jeff L., the Assistant Fire Chief. There we go. Hi, I'm Jeff L., Assistant Fire Chief for the Fire Department. I've, I know we're all individual, but this is my first time officially addressing you. So what I wanted to do was introduce Anthony Morillo, he's a firefighter paramedic with us, in regards to the proclamation that the mayor presented to us early on Fire Prevention Week. Anthony is taking over the coordination of that week for us at the Fire Department. So if there's anybody out there who during the week of October 5th through the 11th wants to make an appointment to come in and see the fire station, bring some kids, anything like that, they can call the station at 538-2591 and ask for firefighter Morillo, he'll be the point of contact for that. And just a little bit of history on what we do during Fire Prevention Week, again, as the proclamation stated this year, it's all about checking our smoke detectors. Twice a year, the Fire Department runs campaigns on changing out your batteries, and that's it when time changes, every spring and every fall, so you'll see posters up on the stations, we try to put them, or when we used to be able to do banners downtown, and just remind people, when we change your clocks, we change our batteries, just life-saving things that we can do to notify some fires. But in addition to that, we bring in a lot of kids to the station. This year, we've actually increased the amount of fire prevention material we've ordered. Usually we order stuff for about 500 kids, this year I think we've got enough for about 750, just because we don't tend to run out, but we get really close and we don't want to run into that. So local schools, Six Street Stout, Jose Barrios, I'll make trips to their station one or two and take tours of the station. The Outlying Schools, such as Harrison Schmidt, Montessori, we actually take our program out to them, and so the kids still get a presentation, still get all the fire hats and stickers and coloring books, things like that. Another thing that we do is we dress our guys up in bunker gear, make them put the SCBA on, breathe air through the mask, and show those kids, especially the little ones like four or five years old, that what we look like mentally, what we look like once we have our gear on and the fact that we're the same person, so hopefully they don't get scared of us, you know, in the event that there's a fire and we're, we're coming in to help them. So do y'all have any questions about Fire Prevention Week in general that Anthony and I could answer?
Any questions? All right. Thank you, appreciate that. Any other reports from Council or the court? Moving on. Next item on the agenda is, under new business, is approval, disapproval of Notice of Intent Ordinance Number 1234, and ordinance repealing Uniform Traffic Code Sections 12-6-12.186 and 12-6-18D, and amending Chapter 50, Section 50-2, penalty assessments of the Town and Silver City Municipal Code. This notice of intent and ordinance is sponsored by Council Ray. Before I turn it over to him, I will just reiterate, this is a notice of intent, so this is not a final reading or putting anything in place, but putting the public on notice that we intend to make this change. To Council Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance here was sponsored by myself, and also what I wanted to do is have texting done all together on the southbound, and apparently it didn't pass, but we did do the texting ordinance, and with this in mind, I would like to see if the town mayor can explain to you exactly what this is all about. Just kind of...
We were ahead of the state in passing the texting ordinance, a ban on texting. Within the year of our passage and inclusion in the municipal code, the state went ahead and did its own texting ordinance. We have an arrangement with the municipal league, where they take all the amendments to the traffic code, they put them in what they call Uniform Traffic Ordinance for use by municipalities to adopt. We, in 2004, then again in 2010, we have adopted that Uniform Traffic Ordinance, the UTO, as the town's traffic ordinance. When the state passed its, the new texting ordinance, we ended up having two of them, one in the UTO and one that we had previously passed. So to get rid of this redundancy, we're going to, just for the neatness, is to get rid of the one that we did in favor of the one that was adopted in the UTO. The only part of the UTO that we're not gonna accept, after some discussion, is that, and apparently the state doesn't think it's that important, so they put a $25 fine on it. Ours is going, it's suggested here in this amendment, that it be $100. So the net effect is we're deleting our old ordinance, we're accepting the new one in the UTO, and we're replacing the $25 for first offense, then a second offense, I think goes to 50. We don't, we're not a court of record, municipal courts aren't courts of record, it's hard to track first offense, second offense, third offense, so it's $100 is the suggested fine, and that's, after this thing is passed, if it is passed, we'll, our municipal code will delete our individual texting ordinance. The language of the state's texting ordinance is very, very good, and we don't lose anything by it. Do you have any questions?
Council Edison?
Yes, I do. Can you tell me if, what the penalty assessment was on our original one?
The original one was considered to be just a municipal offense.
Right.
A municipal offense is anywhere from zero to $500, and giving a lot of discretion to the judge to go up to $500 for an offense, this specifies $100, meaning, you know, letting anybody know what they can expect if they're violent or prosecuted.
So just to clarify, before, it was the judge's discretion, and it could have gone up to $500.
A municipal offense is, yeah, that's correct.
In the UTO, and as a state, we set it at $100.
That's correct.
And so, like you said, I think it's important to just reiterate the fact that you also said that we're not, municipal courts are not a court of record, therefore we can't really track first and second offenses.
They probably have to add staff, they have to change their computers around and... around, and it's, it's not a burden that, that when you weigh the, the cost versus the benefit, that the, the cost exceeds the benefit. So by coming to this dollar amount, which is reasonable, we settle the problem.
And if I, if I went correctly, I know that Santa Fe's original texting ban was $100. I think they're looking at moving to $200. So it's interesting that the state doesn't consider it as important as the rest of, of these other municipalities like ours that have, you know, put the bans in place and are now, like we are trying to conform with the UTO, so, thank you.
Any other questions? Counsel Wright?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve a new of intent ordinance number 1234 and ordinance repealing Uniform Traffic Code Sections 12-6-12.186 and 12-6-18D and amending Chapter 50, Section 50-2 penalty assessments of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code.
Counsel Carr? We have a motion as second for approval of notice of intent ordinance 1234 and ordinance repealing Uniform Traffic Code Sections 12-6-12.186 and 12-6-18D and amending Chapter 50, Section 50-2 penalty assessments of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code. Is there any further discussion?
No, sir.
You know, just as a, as a general comment, it can become quite confusing, you know, in a way the redundancy doesn't hurt us, but it does create confusion mainly in the court system. They, they, they beg the question, which, which code are we dealing with? Which fine schedules are we dealing with? So, so we, it is, it's much better for our courts to be dealing with just the one code, cleans it up. As, as our attorney mentioned, it doesn't, we're not losing anything, we're not losing any strength or, or intent of, of what we were looking for with our original ordinance. So, so I support this as you, as the council moves into a vote. Any, any further discussion?
No, sir.
We have a motion as second for approval of notice of intent ordinance 1234 and ordinance repealing Uniform Traffic Code Sections 12-6-12.186 and 12-6-18D and amending Chapter 50, Section 50-2 penalty assessments of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Motion carries. I will entertain a motion. Counsel Edison?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn. Mr. Mayor, a second.
We have a motion as second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Motion carries. We adjourn.